Chair Patel, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, June 25.
Due to an unforeseen technical issue, this evening's Planning Commission meeting will not be streaming on YouTube Live, but is available to view on Zoom and will also be recorded and made available tomorrow on YouTube.
I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all. Ashley, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Patel.
Here.
Vice Chair Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Abner.
Here.
And Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Good evening and welcome. We are excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. If you're joining by telephone, the conference ID is 851-1538-5719 with a passcode of 516328. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And finally, we welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. First, we have the consent calendar. Ashley, could you please read the consent calendar?
Yes. Item one, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes Approval. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 28, 2024.
Thank you. Is there any member of the Commission who would like to pull this item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, if there are any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Chair Patel, we don't have any public commentators for this item.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
And for the vote, Chair Patel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Nugent.
Yes.
Commissioner Abner.
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the Commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the Commission's discretion and can be extended if the Commission wishes to do so.
Chair Patel, we don't have any public commentators for general public comment.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is our study session. Ashley, would you mind reading the item?
Yes, item number two, 500 East Fourth Avenue, Block 20, revised seven-story office residential mixed-use building.
We will start with a staff presentation, then the applicant presentation, and then public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. Once the public comment period is closed, the chair may ask staff to respond to any public comments, and the Commission will ask clarifying questions, deliberate, and provide input and guidance to staff. This item is a study session, so there will be no action taken on this item.
Good evening, Planning Commission and the members of the public. This is Elaine Ling, Principal Planner. The item before you tonight is a seven-story mixed-use building for office and residences on Block 20, which is located at 500 East Fourth Avenue. As we can see on the aerial map, the subject property is located in the downtown area to the east of Railroad Track as identified in orange dashed line. The downtown counting station is located approximately quarter mile from the subject property. Therefore, no parking is required for this project. The project is located within the downtown retail core support, land use designation, and CBD support zoning designation. The project is also located in the central Claremont sub-area in the downtown area plan. The subject property is surrounded by a variety of uses, including the recently approved or constructed mixed-use buildings and commercial uses, including Block 21 just to the north of the project site, Wakota Building and Kiku Crossing, which is a 100% affordable housing owned by the city. In general, the subject property is surrounded by mixed-use commercial use to the north, high-rise residential uses to the west, low-rise residential uses to the southeast, and service industrial to the east and south. There are a total of five parcels on Block 20, including a variety of uses. For example, there's a Taco Bell on Parcel One, a weekend lot which used to be a gas station on Parcel Two, a single-family residence on Parcel Three, a existing daycare facility on Parcel Four, and Japanese-American Community Center and Gardeners Association on Parcel Five, which are identified as historic resources. Please note, the originally submitted application include all five parcels with demolition of the historic resources on Parcel Five. The revised application removed Parcel Four and Five to avoid demolition of historic resources. Therefore, the project occupies only the Parcel One, Two, and Three. The existing... The subject application is a seven-story mixed-use building, including office uses on the first, second, third, and the seventh floor for a total of 98,700 square feet. The project also includes 72 residential units on Floor Four, Five, and Six. Among all those 72 units, there are six units dedicated for very low-income housing and another six units dedicated for moderate-income housing. All the residential units are rental units. Because this project provide affordable housing at a certain percentage, it qualify for state density bonus, including waiver requests such as the maximum building height over 55 feet. For this project, the maximum building height is 85 feet. Staff now provide a general or brief discussion in terms of the project consistency with the local and state laws. Because the project was submitted March 22 prior to the effective date of General Plan 2040, therefore, this project is only subject to General Plan 2030's actions, policies, and guidelines. As previously discussed, this project is zoned as CBD support, which is consistent with the General Plan 2030 land use designation as downtown retail core support. Generally speaking, that land use designation is located to the east of the downtown core area, to the east of the railroad track. The land use is generally to support downtown core land use designation. The zoning code also provide a list of the development standards, which are summarized here. The table on the slide also provide a comparison between the original submitted application and the revised projects. As you can see, the project is reduced by approximately one-third from the originally submitted project in terms of the floor area, including the office and residential floor area. However, the maximum building height is increased from 75 feet to 85 feet, which is equivalent to one floor. And then also the FAR is increased. Because this project qualify for state density bonus, then the applicant actually request a certain waivers to be deviated from the zoning standards as highlighted with a star sign. With respect to local policy document, the site is located in the central Claremont sub-area in the downtown area plan. For any application in the sub-area, the downtown area plan recommend retail uses at the ground floor, but it's not required for that use. It also promote uses that actually encourage pedestrian activity to increase the connection to the downtown core area. The pedestrian master plan recommend a minimum sidewalk width of 16 feet in this area. However, the zoning code require zero setback unless the applicant voluntarily propose landscape adjacent to the sidewalks. Per Planning Commission's recommendation in the previous study session, the applicant voluntarily dedicated a A-foot public access easement to increase the sidewalk to have a minimum width of 14 feet on all parameter of this building. Staff also want to know that for our bicycle master plan, the central South Claremont Street is a Class 3 bicycle boulevard. The application is not subject to Housing Accountability Act or it is not a housing development project as I defined in the Housing Accountability Act because the floor area for the residential is less than two-thirds of the total floor area. The project is still subject to state density bonus law by providing certain percentage of affordable housing. The base density for this project site is 39 units. By providing 50%, 15% of the very low rental housing, this project is qualify for 50% density bonus. Assembly Bill 1287 is a new state law which create a stackable density bonus. The new state law allows for any projects which qualify for 50% density bonus for an additional 20% to 50% density bonus if the project provide additional moderate or very low-income housing. Because this project is already qualify for 50% density bonus by providing an additional 15% moderate-income housing, this project qualify for another additional 50% density bonus for a total of 100% density bonus. In other words, the total allowable residential units on this part's project is 78 units. And then the project proposed for 72 units, which fall within that allowable maximum residential units. By providing a 15% very low-income housing, this project qualify for three concessions and waivers. State density bonus law did not regulate the maximum waiver for each projects. Therefore, the applicant proposed zero concessions and then aid waivers as listed on the slides. Staff currently still working with applicant to verify the deviation for each waiver request. Please note, the some of those waiver appear to be more suitable for concession request, especially tied to the commercial request in terms of the maximum height, bulk, and street wall area. However, that will be discussed further and refined with applicant at a later stage of the review process. Staff is looking for Planning Commission's comments in terms of the proposed use building design and other aspect. The public provide comments at the neighborhood meeting for the displacement of the local business. As the proposed project did not include any ground-level retail, some public provide comments that it's a loss to the neighborhood. And the staff also want to bring to the Planning Commission's notes that the original application include one restaurant at the corner of Delaware Street and Fifth Avenue. That restaurant was eliminated from the current application. However, staff want to know to the Planning Commission that because the office and the residential uses are permitted use, so there's limited ability to require different mix of uses for the project. However, it is opportunity for Planning Commission to provide input based on the policy and guidelines. Shift now to the second discussion item regarding the architectural design. Staff want to know that the applicant and their architects present here at the meeting, they can provide more details at a higher level in terms of architectural design. Staff want to bring a few elements here to Planning Commission's attention. This building is Mediterranean Revival. And at the ground level, the applicant propose brum millions, metal canopy to promote pedestrian level activity and several setbacks from the ground level all the way up to the very top floor, which is also create varieties at a ground level. There is multiple detailed elements throughout the entire building to enhance the Mediterranean Revival architectural style. Staff also recommend Planning Commission to consider the architectural design in the neighborhood context. As you can see on the slides, there's are currently surrounded by a few recently approved constructed projects, including Block 20, Wakota Building, and Kiku Crossing. Although the proposed project is different in architectural style from the surrounding building, it applied a similar approach in terms of massing and then architectural articulation. In addition to more contemporary designs, there are other traditional low-rise residential neighborhood to the south and southeast as shown on the slides. The rendering on the left of the slide shows the overall bird eye view of the neighborhood with the building proposed. To bring to Planning Commission's attention is the General Plan 2030 have a land use designation for the site as a downtown retail core support. And the subject parcel is located at a transition between the higher height to the lower height of 35 or 30 feet maximum building height area. However, the General Plan 2040 have a much higher density for the subject property. So the subject property is zoned as mixed-use high for a maximum of 102, 130 dwelling units per acre, which this project fall within that realm. Although the ultimate maximum height will be determined on the measure Y, Bollinger Measures Results. Staff also want to know to the Planning Commission that all the surrounded adjacent parcels are also increase their height in the General Plan 2040 land use designation. Those three questions are areas planning, one, planning staff for the Planning Commission to provide inputs, especially in terms of the specific architectural style or the transition to the surrounding one-to-two-story buildings. The subject application require a site plan architectural review, site development planning application, tentative parcel map to merge three parcel into one parcel, and will go through an intensive environmental review as well. Staff received three public comments letter so far, which is included in the agenda packet, and then one additional post-packet comments, which is also uploaded after this agenda being published. The neighborhood meeting was held on May 28, 2024. Approximately 30 general public attended the meeting and provide comments in the following items. In terms of the next steps, the applicant will revise the project based on the Planning Commission and publish comments. And the staff, the applicant, and the environmental consultant will work together on the environmental review. Please note, this project will eventually be approved by City Council because the building is over 55 feet in maximum height. Those are the discussion item that planning staff seek Planning Commission's inputs on. With that, staff conclude the presentation and is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. I actually think we'll have the applicant presentation next, and then public comments, and then we can do commission questions.
It's good to be with you tonight. You've seen this project before. You've seen me before. Different company name, different hairstyle. But let me know whether you like it better than the old hairstyle after the meeting. Don't tell me now. So I, once the presentation's up, we'll start going through. I look really red. This red in the... It looks like I have sunburn. I don't have that bad a sunburn. I have to be careful. I always get text messages from certain people in the community like, "You look really weird."
You have a quick heart, too.
Ready? So Block 20 is a project that you've seen before. We got architectural comments and a lot of comments from our initial community meeting and our initial study session. We were in the process of incorporating all those comments into the older design when we decided to not include the historic resource as part of the development project. And so when we decided not to include the historic resource, it impacted kind of our whole vision of the Fifth Street side of the project. And so ultimately, the building that houses Safari Kids was also excluded from the project. And so the new project area, in the time that had elapsed from the time that we originally submitted this project with the full block to when we decided not to include the historic resource, state density bonus law changed, and we were able to get 100% bonus on current zoning if we increased the affordability level of the units that we were providing. And so we went ahead and saw that as a net benefit to the project and the community to... Although we shrunk the side area by a third, we were able to maintain a similar density of housing as the prior project. One thing I'll note is this project has 15 two-bedrooms. So Block 21, Fourth and Claremont, and Third and Claremont, and Fourth and Claremont, all three of the former projects that are neighbors here that we have developed and one that we unfortunately have not developed yet, included no two-bedrooms. So this is the first time we've included two bedrooms, and we have included 15 of them. That's why we're not at the full 78 units. If we wanted to go back to studios and ones, we could fit the full 78 units. But we got a lot of feedback from the community, and I think also from the council, or excuse me, from the Planning Commission last time, that there was an appetite for more two-bedroom units here. The, you know, city staff has done excellent job of already covering most of these points, so I won't belabor them. Let's see here. This is a helpful slide. It walks you through kind of some of the original design and the new design stats. So the residential makes up 42% of the total building area. And you saw that the commercial area shrank considerably, but the residential square footage actually didn't shrink very much from the original proposal. And the reason the unit count again is lower is because we have bigger units and two-bedroom units. The building is seven stories in height. That's, you know, roughly 10 feet taller than the prior submittal, and that was to allocate a four-story for additional housing based upon the revised state density bonus opportunity that we had. The Claremont, Fourth, and Delaware facades all have the similar treatment that you saw with the prior project and all incorporated any comments that we got, including, you know, setbacks. You know, staff already talked about the sidewalk dedication and other things like that. Obviously, there's no parking required here, but we are providing two levels of subterranean parking to support the project. And obviously, you know, we're very close proximity to the Fifth Street garage as well, so we don't anticipate any sort of parking concerns, you know, regarding this project. Let's see. So this gives you a view of the Fourth and Claremont corner of the project. Again, you've seen this corner before. We incorporated a lot of the comments that we got in our prior study session. And so, you know, this shouldn't look too far of a departure from, you know, how you remember the Block 20 project. We're really happy with how it turned out. You know, we've gone through many, many iterations of this design. You can see on the outdoor balconies, there's, you know, heavy cornices. We really think that this architecture is mixing really well with the environment in which it's placed, and we're really happy with how it ties into some of the other developments and also presents some variety. This is a close-up of Fourth and Claremont, so you know where the current Taco Bell is. And this is the corner of Fourth and Delaware. So, you know, Delaware is a challenge, as, you know, we've talked about with prior projects and in our prior meetings regarding this project. But we've gone ahead in, you'll notice, at the corner, and then also against the Safari Kids building, we are significantly off of the property line. So one of the benefits that that provides us is, you know, expands our ability to provide amenities in the medial adjacent to the sidewalk. It creates a more interesting pedestrian experience. And then relative to our neighbor at Safari Kids, will be well, I think... What'd you tell me? Are we 12 feet off the property line? 13 feet. So if you think about the Safari Kids building, that's built all the way against their property line on Delaware, we're 13 feet back. So we're significantly further back than their building currently is, which, you know, will create a nice area as pedestrians are making the transition from the narrower, you know, sidewalk area to the new development area. This gives you an idea of some of the balconies, some of the outdoor space. Again, there's a lot of finishing touches that we've done here, a lot of different, you know, from stridation to also the cornices and the window framing and all that. So we're happy with how it turned out. And obviously, from the pedestrian experience, this will be well out of their view. But as you step back from the building, you know, a distance gives you an idea of what the building looks like. This, you know, captures well the pedestrian experience along Fourth Avenue. It's not, you know, dissimilar from some of the other tools that we've utilized in the past. You'll notice a few things. You know, the soffits are expressed, you know, in a very defining way here. You've got the stone. Instead of, you know, just being at the base of the building, we brought it up quite high. You know, you got the planters and the benches and the canopy. And I also... And I also like how we treated the canopy and then had kind of the wood slating. So as you walk through, you know, the pedestrian area, I think it adds some interest if you look up through the canopy. The JACC, so, you know, we didn't talk about this last time because, you know, the last submittal of the project was anticipated to, you know, include the demolition of the JACC, but that's no longer the case. And so to explain the JACC property briefly, there's the Old Gardener Center, there's the historic resource, which is the home, and then there's a driveway and a nonhistoric resource, which is a garage. That driveway and the garage provide a natural buffer between us and the historic resource, which is the house. So we're already 11 and a half feet from the house, and then we, we've gone ahead and proposed some artwork to go in that area that'll, that'll help emphasize that the Japanese Cultural Center is there. So are, we anticipate either working with Jets or Wes at the JACC or, you know, some other artists to, to have a piece that would speak to the adjacent resource. So you'll see we've highlighted that there. That's not what it's going to look like. You know, obviously, we'll, we'll need to go through a process, but we thought it was a good opportunity to, to add to that resource, which is adjacent. So one of the concerns we got in the neighborhood meeting was the view from the neighborhood, that the building, that the additional floor of residential would impact the view maybe more than the prior submittal did. And so we did this rendering to clearly show that because the building is set back off of Fifth Avenue now, its additional story has, you know, very little impact to the view corridor of Fifth Avenue. And this helps show you as well how the building is set back behind the adjacent building on the, on the sidewalk. And you can see as well that on the bottom floors, there's no windows facing the adjacent This gives you another view of the previous project and now the current proposal. And, and, you know, it's a view down Delaware from the single-family residential areas. And again, you know, the setback off Fifth, we think is a net positive, you know, vis a vis views. And I think you can also see that because of what we did with the L shape, the massing reads much, much less significant from the residential neighborhood than it did when we had the entire block, even though there's an additional story. This is kind of a bird's eye view of what we're talking about, and it just gives you an idea. You can see the historic resource, that's the home, and then you can see the other adjacent neighbor and our setback behind them or, you know, along Delaware. So it gives you a good idea. There was a concern brought up in the neighborhood meeting about privacy for the adjacent neighbor, and I, I've kind of talked a little bit about that, but obviously, I mean, our windows are immediately on the property line. And so it, I kind of describe it to, you know, trying to look out of a New York skyscraper and see the front door. You know, it's pretty tough to see down into where the playground area is for the Safari Kids, but certainly Kikue Crossing sees directly into that area. And regarding construction impact, et cetera, to the adjacent neighbors, you know, we'll certainly work with them to make sure that we minimize in, you know, the best way we can, but we wouldn't anticipate any significant impact beyond what they experienced with Kikue Crossing. So that's the project, and I'm happy to take any questions, and thank you so much for, for having me.
Thank you for the presentation. Now we will move forward with public comment.
Chair Patel, right now we have seven commenters in person. If anybody else in person wants to speak, please hand me speaker slip at this time. And if you want to speak on Zoom, please raise your hand. I'm just going to give it a few moments.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to start with our in-person speakers. Lori Watanuki, you can come up to the microphone.
Good evening, Chair Patel and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki, and these are my comments on Block 20. The objective design standards has designated Spanish Revival for mixed-use projects in the gateway. We would like to see Block 20 blend in better with our more traditional pre-war Spanish Revival and Craftsman homes in the central neighborhood and our historic downtown. The new building could be scaled back so that it is the right fit for the neighborhood. In attachment number seven, there is a picture of another Windy Hill project. It's at 95 First Street in Los Altos, and we feel that this is a better alternative. The revised Block 20 seems to have lost the Mediterranean style compared to the previous version. We'd like to see traditional Spanish Revival features such as the curved entries, the curved windows, plain light-colored stucco along with the arched curved windows, et cetera, and bring these features from the roof line down to the ground floor. The building setbacks need to be revisited as well, and although now they say that there is more space between the, the three properties, but the, but the play area and the two historic buildings will need to be protected from falling construction materials, dust, and noise. We are concerned with the cumulative impacts of Block 20 construction trucks combined with the truck traffic from South Anflet. There will be more trucks around Third, Fourth, Fifth, and South Humboldt and the Yoshiko Yamanoji Historic Site with this project in support to preserve our historic resources from dust, air pollution, truck vibrations, and diesel particulates. We prefer that the construction trucks take the state highways from 101 to 92 to El Camino Real to Ninth Avenue to South Clermont to Block 20 and back to reduce the pollution and the property impacts during construction. I'd like to take a minute to request that the history of the Japanese immigrants be explored a little bit further, and this particular project highlights that. There was an area from Fifth Avenue to Popular, El Camino to 101, which was a designated area for the Japanese-Americans, where they were allowed to live in Sematail. It was a very restricted area. That's why Fifth Avenue is very important. There are small cluster of Japanese-American sites in and around this area. We have-
Excuse me, Ms. Watanuki, your time is up. Do you want to finish your sentence?
Yeah, I'd like for you to take a look at a link that I'm going to provide in a letter that I will turn in, which will see what other cities are doing, 24 other cities in California, and how they are looking towards preserving these Japanese sites. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Light, followed by Michelle Fernandez.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name's David Light. I'm a long-term resident of the central neighborhood. I actually live on Fremont Street, so I live, I live really close to this project. I have four concerns, and one of them was really covered during, when the discussion of the neighborhood meeting, and that's the lack of retail, ground floor retail businesses. And as discussed, the developer really didn't have any interest in, in any kind of restaurant, even though a previous design did have, include a restaurant. And I just want to point out that our neighborhood's already losing many local restaurants and businesses due to extensive construction projects. So it's almost like we have a retail desert in our, in walking distance of our neighborhood. The second concern is parking, and overall, I'd like to see a smaller project with adequate onsite parking to reduce overflow parking that would impact our neighborhood. The garage is designed for 160 parking stalls, and I think there are 30 additional stalls, but there could be up to 658 office workers if you calculate the amount of square footage and square footage per office worker. And this just doesn't seem, the 129 parking spaces just doesn't appear to be adequate. And this is really a major concern for all the tall buildings that are being approved without adequate parking, because not everybody's going to ride a cow train or Samtrans. The third point is we need more sycamore trees on Fifth Avenue. There are some new trees shown in the design on Fourth, South Delaware, and Clermont, and there are already two, excuse me, existing trees on Fifth in front of, in front of the Japanese gardener's meeting hall and the Safari Kids, but it'd be great to include more trees on Fifth to be included in the, in the project. And the final concern is that we have is around secure financing before any demolition is done of the existing buildings. We have three major projects now that were initiated and that impact our neighborhood. One of them is being, or two of them are for sale now, and there's a lot of confusion about which developer is going to be responsible for the future of these sites. And these are the two housing projects on Fremont Street between Second and Third Avenues and the other, the Block 21 by Windy Hill, which is an empty lot. And so we just want to make sure that there's an assurance that financing's been secured before there's any demolition of the Taco Bell or any trees are cut down. Thank you very much for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Fernandez, followed by Francie Souza.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Michelle Fernandez, and I live on Fourth Avenue right next to Block 20. I'm very concerned about the plans for a seven-story building with four levels of office and three levels of housing being built in what is acute and historical district. The planned building is too tall and would not be a good fit for the small footprint of 29,000 square feet. This building as described is 85 feet tall, which is 10 feet taller than the Kikue Crossing, and will bring significant shadow impacts on Fourth Avenue along the north side and portions of South Clermont and South Delaware streets. For consideration, there is a smaller Windy Hill project in Los Altos on 95 First Street and is a great example of a smaller building with less height, which would be a better fit for our neighborhood. We would like to see a project with less office space and would suggest that the four floors of office space be reduced to two floors of incubator space for startups and companies requiring a smaller footprint. Construction dust is also a huge concern in the past with the Kikue Crossing project in our neighborhood and Safari Kids preschool. I would also ask for you to consider any future construction trucks be rerouted through the state highways 101 to 92 to El Camino, Ninth, St. Clair, South Clermont. Thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Francie Souza, followed by Diane Whitaker.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Francie Souza, and my husband and I live very close to this new project. We walk down Fifth Avenue daily to Downtown and Central Park, so we have a lot of interest in what's going on. Some of my questions were answered, but I do still see the height of the building and Safari Kids, especially the playground area, as being an issue for privacy for the children during building and also when the building is complete. And I was thinking even something like a sun umbrella over the outside playground area might help with some of those privacy issues, but it would be something to look at. Also, other people have commented on having more of a Spanish style representing the historic Spanish architecture in our neighborhood. And Windy Hill has a, a building that Lori mentioned in Los Altos, which encompasses some of those arched windows and Spanish style that we feel would be appropriate for our community and would add a benefit to it. The last comment is about the parking garage entry on South Clermont. And I think with the Kikue Crossing parking and the 14 other, or 13 other approved projects in the city, we're concerned about just the traffic and the direction that it's coming through our neighborhood, especially down Fifth getting to the freeway. So if there would be a way to do a traffic survey to include all of the buildings and how the traffic is going to be circulated through the city, we would really appreciate that. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diane Whitaker, followed by Lisa Van Bort.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Diane Whitaker. First, I'm going to address the item Architectural Design Massing and Transition with the Adjacent Historic Buildings and Surroundings in the Downtown Context. The proposed development is subject to the San Mateo, San Mateo's General Plan 2030 since it was submitted prior to the adoption of the new general plan. Therefore, the 2030 Land Use Map designates this site as Mixed-Use Commercial Residential, which, and I'm quoting from the document, "is meant to provide uses at intensities that complement both the downtown core and the adjacent residential neighborhoods," end of quote. The immediate adjacent neighbors are three one-story buildings, two historic structures, and one preschool with an outdoor play yard located on the same city block as the proposed seven-story structure. The existing residential neighborhood is composed predominantly of single-family homes. A seven-story building is too tall and too massive, and hence not a good fit for this location, especially given the parcel is only 29,000 square feet in size. Second item has to do with other project and design aspects that should be considered. Per the state density bonus law, this proposed project is eligible for three concessions and additional waivers. A total of eight waivers have been requested, four of which include, one, a 55% increase in the maximum height from 55 feet to 85 feet; two, a 68% increase in the maximum floor area ratio going from 3.0 to 5.03; third, a 33% increase in the maximum bulk length from 150 feet to 200 feet; and four, a 47% increase in the maximum diagonal length from 170 feet to 250. The result of this high number of waiver and concession requests results in a proposed project that overwhelms the adjacent predominantly residential neighborhood and the immediately adjacent historic structures and the preschool. As your meeting tonight is a study session, please request that the applicant go back to the drawing board and make substantive changes to- and make substantive changes to their proposed project so that it is a better fit for the adjacent neighbors, the neighborhood, and the city of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Van Board, followed by Lori Heater.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Lisa Van de Ford. I submitted written comments late this afternoon in regards to Block 20, but I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review them. So I thought I'd capture some of my main concerns here with the hopes that either you or the applicant can address them tonight. While I'm thrilled to see that the two historic buildings were carved out of the project and will be left standing in place, I am saddened to realize tonight that we will be losing 411 South Clermont, a building built in 1888, and as such is one of our oldest structures in San Mateo. I do hope that more consideration can be given to saving it. I didn't realize it was being demolished until tonight, so I'm hoping that that can be looked at. That would be a really big loss. I also have concerns about how the Block 20 development will impact the two remaining historic resources in terms of architectural design, scale, and massing. When I look at the project elevation on the South Clermont side at the garage exit area, the project appears massively out of scale and design with the two historic resources. I'd love to see revisions to the design, scale, and massing at that elevation so that the new seven-story building integrates better with historic properties adjacent to it. It should complement, not crowd, and blend, not dwarf. Right now, that side of the building looks like a real-life scene from the movie Up, and that is not a good thing. I looked for but did not find an exterior rendering of the project elevation on the backside that faces East Fifth Avenue. I feel that we need a more realistic view of how the rear of Block 20 will relate to the rear of the two historic buildings. And I also have privacy concerns about the view of Safari Kids preschool from the upper-story windows of the project. Finally, please ensure that the long-term structural integrity and stability of both historic buildings are not compromised during construction activities so that these two important buildings remain foundationally intact for years to come. The Japanese-American Community Center was built in 1865 and is one of the oldest structures remaining in our city. It would be a terrible shame if all the excavation required for both the building and underground parking were to adversely impact it or the 1931 gardener's building next door. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Lori Heater, followed by Sudhir Mather.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to comment early on this project. And I must say, I'm representing the San Mateo Heritage Alliance, a new organization that's devoted to helping to preserve our historic resources. And I think several people have spoken tonight about the need to address the historic resources on the site and adjacent to the site. We're very pleased that the two historic structures are being saved and will remain in the city, but they are completely dwarfed by the surrounding building. It's interesting to note that while the building has been scaled down, to me, it looks like it's been scaled up. In addition to adding the extra story, the street-level facades are now, look like they're three stories instead of two, which is totally out of human scale and serves to further dwarf the existing historic buildings and the adjacent housing. The building seems to have lost a lot of its Spanish Revival aspects. Just because you have a tile roof and divided light windows doesn't make it a Spanish Revival house. The objective design standards require seven elements, and I don't think I could really count seven elements of Spanish Revival architecture in those buildings, especially things like the stacked stone. I would like to echo Lori's comment regarding the number of Japanese or the area as being home to many Japanese immigrants in the early part of the 20th century, and that San Mateo is identified in the map of Japan's Town Project. And I think that would merit some additional study by the historian. And I think the historic report should be updated to reflect the new project and to consider the effects on the buildings that would remain. The last thing I'd like to say is that while 411 South Clermont did not qualify as an historic resource, it is one of our very few buildings built before 1888 in the early part of the development of the city. I think we really should consider, is there a way to preserve that as a local resource, even if it doesn't rise to the standards of the state or national registers for historic protection? We're losing our buildings at a pretty fast rate. So I hope you can update the Historic Resources Report and revisit the Spanish Revival architecture. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sudhir Mather, followed by our last speaker on Zoom, Linda Simonsen.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sudhir Mather. My wife and I are the co-owners of Safari Kid. I know a lot of people have spoken about the preschool, and we've also spoken in the public comments. But I have just three main concerns. I haven't come too prepared, so I'll just talk about the concerns that we have. The concerns are very simple, and I think we can address them. Before I address my concern, I think I would like to compliment Mike and his team, Evan and the architects, on actually a very nice-looking architectural building. I actually like it personally. I know there'd be different views about it, but personally, I think it's a good-looking building. Our concern's number one. We're running a preschool, and during the construction phase, our biggest concern is pollution, debris that could fall. And the concerns are not just ours. The concern, I think, our parents would have. And, you know, having a large preschool that we're running there with parents being concerned and the potential risk of parents withdrawing their children from this place is a serious concern for us. I'm sure we can work to something that can, you know, that can address them, but it's something that we'd like to definitely put on the table. Concern two, I don't know how much we can do something about it, but is the fact that there is going to be a privacy concern for children. Now, the privacy, and I know some of the others talked about it. The building stands eight inches away from the boundary wall of Safari Kid on both sides. Our playground wall, the building stands eight inches from there. Now, I know, you know, and Mike is right. You can't, it's like looking down on from a New York building and trying to find your main door. It's not that easy. But in the plans, I did see that there are balconies that are drawn out. And I could be wrong in my assessment. If I'm wrong, so be it. But if there is a balcony, especially for the two-bedroom houses, and the balcony actually is stepping out, and you can actually then watch, look straight into the playground, I think that would be a definite privacy concern. I'm just putting it out there. If something can be done to address that, we'll be highly obligated. Obviously, the third part is if there is a setback that can be increased from the boundary wall. And I know it's a big deal, and, you know, it may impact the commercial viability of the building, but that would give a little more breathing space to the building. I think that's our primary areas. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our last speaker is going to be Linda Simonsen. You can go ahead and unmute.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Simonsen, and my concern is the office and housing imbalance. I do appreciate that there's going to be 72 units, which is, that's great. But it's hard to imagine another 99,000 square feet of office in the downtown. The office buildings are going to be vacant on the weekends, and lots of workers are working remotely. I just think this is something that we've talked about at other Planning Commission meetings, is that, you know, do we really need this level of office development in our downtown with what's going on throughout the whole region in terms of office vacancy and have concerns about that and really see that that's not going to contribute much to the quality of life for those of us who live in San Mateo to have such an amount, such a high amount of office construction? Also, we need to, you know, really think about the Planning Commission level, the RENA numbers, the required numbers that we need to, of housing units that we need to develop in San Mateo to meet the state guidelines. At this rate, 72 units, which is great, but we would need 97 buildings of 72 to meet. There are somewhat like 7,000 that were required. And really would recommend that the city planning, that the Planning Commission and also the City Council really look at our own zoning requirements to allow developers to do more housing development in the downtown area rather than the limits that are currently on. I do believe that's in the works. And so that is just a concern. We just, you know, the office numbers just seem really out of whack and seem to exacerbate rather than solve the housing office balance. So those are, you know, concerns that I would have, as well as I would support the concerns that many others have shared. And that would really be my main concerns for this particular meeting. So thank you very much, and I appreciate the developers have come to us. We've met with them. But I do think these are real concerns that the city has to look at. What do we need as a city to really make it a viable, thriving downtown and a bunch of office space with no retail? I don't think is the answer to that. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Chair Patel, we do not have any more public commenters.
Okay, thank you. I think typically at this point, we ask the applicant if they would like to have time to respond to any of the comments. I believe we usually give five minutes. Is that right? Would the applicant like five minutes to respond?
I'm not sure if there's any particular public comments that you want to hear a response from me. I'm happy to. I'm kind of playing back through them. But, you know, yeah, I don't think that I have any comments. I'm happy to specifically address any of them that you'd like me to. But I think most of them are ones that we've talked about in our prior meeting.
Sure, I think, you know, there were some common ones. If you just want to repeat again. Yeah, the common ones I heard were privacy impacts to the Safari Kids. There was one commenter who suggested perhaps some sort of umbrella. Or could you clarify whether there are any balconies that overlook the Safari Kids?
Yeah, so what we anticipate along the balconies is we can put glazing there that, you know, limits someone's ability. Kind of like, I don't know if you've seen the railroad side of Third Avenue, but there's a glazing on top of the pony wall, so you can't look over. And we can easily film that glazing, or if there's some sort of concern like that. I don't, candidly, Kikue Crossing looks directly on the playground. So I don't understand the privacy concern. We are leasing the building to that balcony, you know, to people that are not, you know, going to be throwing kids or throwing things down on the playground. But we could look at treating the balcony in a way that you couldn't look out, if that's something that, you know, the city wanted to condition the project with.
Great. I think another common comment was about the impacts of the construction to those historic resources, specifically around dust or vibrations. Can you speak to any mitigation plans you might be implementing?
Yes, and so the city staff is aware of all of that. Our engineers are aware of all of that. And we would be working, you know, double time to make sure that we don't impact especially a historic resource like the home that's there. As far as construction dust, you know, that's something that we know how to deal with. And, you know, it's something that, construction's never fun, except for maybe, you know, the steel walkers that get to swing around the building. But for the rest of us, it's a lot of work, and so we'll work to make sure that we don't impact those buildings in a negative way. We have a very good working relationship with the JACC and with the Safari Kids team. And so, you know, open lines of communication from day one to today. And so we would continue to expect that so that we could make sure and take care of them, both of which are significant community stakeholders, and we're aware of that.
And then I think there were a couple of comments around setbacks and whether it would be possible to set back the building further from the adjacent resources and the Safari Kids.
Yeah, setting back, so we're 11 and 1/2 feet from the historic resource already. I don't see a material impact to increasing that. In addition to that, the Clermont facade is already limited, and our ability to drop the parking ramp is limited. We are only allowed to have the parking ramp on Clermont. And if we move that parking ramp, we're going to start losing parking stalls because it just won't run efficiently. So it's not practical for us to move any further off the property line from a design standpoint. And I also don't think that, you know, moving any further back is going to positively impact the resource.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any clarifying questions for staff or the applicant?
Yes, I have a few. Let's see.
Oh, thank you. I'm being reminded to close the public comment, so the public comment is now closed. Commissioner Williams?
Okay, I have a few. So let's see. First of all, I wanted to ask, is the historic resource building a residential building in any way? Or is it, you know, daytime use similar to the preschool? Or I guess it could be daytime or evening. Can anyone answer that?
Through the chair, so the historic building or resources used to be a residential building for the JCC Center, but currently, I believe, is run for a nonprofit organization.
Okay. Oh, okay, and then my next question, sorry, I'm jumping around on my questions for sort of prioritizing them here. The other comment, a comment was made about the objective design standards requiring Spanish Revival design. And, you know, there was the comment about requiring seven elements, I think it is. But can someone from staff clarify when that is required? If you're using the objective design standards, when it is required that you choose from those seven elements?
Thank you.
Perhaps you can provide some clarification for that.
Yes, through the chair. So this project is not a housing project identified by HAA because the total floor area for the residential area is less than 2/3 of the total floor area. Therefore, our objective design standards is not applicable to this project. So we will rely on this questionnaire review based on the general plan and other policies.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Through the chair, if I, sorry, I just wanted to chime in. This is not an HAA project, but we were just having a side discussion. I'm looking closely here, because there is some question about how ODS would apply or Objective Design Standards would apply to this grouping of mixed-use projects where you're probably five or more units and subject to state density bonus, but less than the threshold to be a HAA project. It does look like, in this case, this particular district, which is the, I was just looking for the downtown support, does actually stipulate that residential uses shall be permitted as part of a mixed-use development subject to the city's objective design standards as adopted by resolution. So in this particular district, it does actually look like they would be applicable. Where, and I think we will need to clarify exactly how they're applied in other districts. But I think for this particular area, they would, in fact, be applicable here.
And required, then?
Yes.
This project was submitted prior to the adoption of the Objective Design Standards.
Can we clarify from the staff whether the Objective Design Standards would apply if the project was submitted prior to the adoption of Objective Design Standards?
We'll need to determine, because the original application definitely predates Objective Design Standards. This revised version was submitted afterwards. So I think that's a discussion we'll need to have to determine applicability here.
Okay, and I mean, that's part of what we're talking about tonight, too, is the design of the building, so we can get into that further. Regardless of ODS. I have a, I have a question here. I said, can you confirm what the actual parking requirements are? So isn't it that, can, so I guess that's another question I had based on a comment from the public.
Based on the state law, there is no parking requirement for
Okay.
project in this area. However, our zoning ordinance do require a study. So if the project proposed three years ago, we would require parking study to make sure that the parking will accommodate the uses. However, it's not required today.
Okay. Okay. And then lastly, I have a question about, maybe I'll just leave this as a comment. It's about sort of the active pedestrian zone and retail versus office, but we can, I can, I can comment on that later. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
Thank you for the presentation. Elaine was very thorough. So the city's staff report states that this is, this project is not a housing development, development under government code section six, five, five, so on and so forth. And the applicant's density bonus letter says that this is a housing development. And that is the basis for their concessions and allowances to alleviate some of the requirements. So my question is, is it just semantics that we're talking about here? The city is saying it's not a housing project based on government code. Yet the state is still allowing density bonuses based on it being a housing project?
Through the chair, there's a couple of different thresholds here. So when we're talking about a Housing Accountability Act project, which limits discretion, provides certain provisions for functional ministerial approval, that's different than being applicable to density bonus, which would just be any housing project or mixed-use project with five or more units. And so that's, I think, the two different thresholds. You can be subject to or eligible for density bonus without being a Housing Accountability Act project.
Okay, so.
And just to build off what the director said, the Housing Accountability Act, there's a threshold of two-thirds residential. And that's why this project does not qualify for that.
Right. Okay, so I think the staff report says that there are eight waivers that are being requested. Yet when I look at the applicant's density bonus letter, I think they're looking for three concessions and five waivers. Is there a difference that we need to make to understand there?
So the project's eligible for three concessions, but applicant proposed eight waivers.
Well, their letter says waivers, but at three of them, they're actually calling them concessions. So they've got three concessions and they're looking for five waivers. Are waivers unlimited?
Through the chair, yes. So you, you get a specified number of concessions based on the mix of affordable that's provided and an unlimited number of waivers. There are different thresholds for how they would be applied. And for the purposes of the study session, we haven't evaluated these requests yet. That'll happen as part of the formal application review.
Okay, so since it's not a housing accountability project, it is, it is, it can get bonuses and waivers and it still can be denied.
I think there's different thresholds. I, I think the, the key is a different applicability depending on which legislation applies here. But the same consideration should be applied. If you're talking about denying a concession or waiver, there are certain findings that you would have to make. So I don't know if you're referring to individual concessions or waivers or the overall project. But there's more limited ability to issue a denial if we're talking about a Housing Accountability Act project.
No, I'm talking about the whole project, not just individual waivers or concessions. So, and it's a great report and it, it explains a lot of the different components that we are looking at here. Yet in, in staff's opinion, you know, we're saying that, you know, some of these concessions and or waivers may apply or we may be looking at them in a different manner between the residential component and the commercial component. As a whole, as an entity, the, the whole packet, as this project is designed, is it staff's recommendation that it meets our codes and our general plans and requirements as it sits?
Through the chair, since this is a study session, the goal is to focus on the architectural and site design. And then as part of the review of the formal application, we will be assessing the density bonus requests as part of this project. And so then that would be a question more when this comes back as part of a public hearing.
Okay, just curious on, it, it's clear that there is a lot of moving parts here. And just trying to understand how the city perceives this project today as we are being asked to comment on it. I'm just curious, you know, you know, what the feeling is with the concessions and the waivers as they, as they stand today. That was it for questions to staff.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes, through the chair. My questions are actually more or less follow-ups on previous questions to, to clarify some things. So when saying that the, the ODS, the design standards do apply, can you clarify what that means for a project like this? So my impression is that the applicability of the ODS is most important for HAA compliant projects, which basically cannot be denied if they follow the ODS. But in a project like this, which is not protected under the Housing Accountability Act, the, the applicant's use of the ODS versus going through discretionary route is not particularly legally meaningful because it's 100% discretionary. Is that what, how we would?
I think before we can give a final answer, we do have to analyze exactly how these two overlap. The applicant does have the ability to request the discretionary design review process in lieu of compliance with objective design standards.
Okay.
But in terms of that exact, for the, this grouping of projects where, well, it is a housing project, but less than a Housing Accountability Act project, I think we still need to do some internal assessment to see how, how these overlap. But there is applicant does have the ability to request the discretionary path in lieu of ODS compliance.
Yeah, and this is, this is new territory too for the city.
And isn't that what we're doing now is the discretionary, I mean, we're starting that process as the discretionary review with this study session. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having the study session if they were complying with ODS 100%. And, I mean, like you said, it's new territory, but that's why I wanted to clarify it.
I, I think that'd be true if, if they were complying 100% and it was a HAA project.
Okay.
We're also dealing with the wrinkle of the fact that this was submitted. The original application was submitted prior to ODS and now we're here with this revision. So that's another wrinkle, as I said, but I, I think you're right if this were an HAA project, but it's not.
And through the chair, just following up on that, being that this is a study session, this is an opportunity to flag architectural and site design elements. Considerations, this isn't binding. This isn't the same as an action taken by the planning commission. So there is latitude to provide the input and then ultimately the applicant will have the ability to factor that in. And that'll be folded into the final project that ultimately comes back. So there's more latitude because there isn't a binding decision being made this evening.
Thank you. My other question is also somewhat related to this. And it's more of a procedural question so that the commission and applicant and the public can understand what will happen in the future. So this is the study session. It's primarily focused on the design. At some point, this, this project will likely come back to us. But we would only be able to provide a recommendation because this is a project that must be approved by the city council.
That is correct because it does exceed the 55-foot height limit. The city council is the ultimate decision-making entity for this project.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nugent. My fellow commissioners covered most of my questions, but let me just take another look to see. So my, my questions are for the applicant. You mentioned that when you decided to remove the historic resources from the project area, that led to you also deciding to remove the Safari Kids preschool from the project area. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Why, why one triggered the other?
Yeah, for a couple of reasons. One is, once we essentially lost part of the Fifth Street facade, there was a fair amount of public comment regarding Fifth, excuse me, Fifth Ave. And, and so we felt that, and you know, how these things have progressed is often somewhat humorous to me, but we felt that the project would be better served to not have any frontage on Fifth Street than to surround the historic resource on all sides. And so ultimately, that's what we decided to do. I think that, you know, we understand it. I don't think a historic resource needs an entire block of clear real estate to be valued. And, but we did make sure and designed the building in a way that it would be sensitive to that historic resource. So that's what we've tried and attempted to do. As you know, I've also torn down historic resources. So when I felt it was appropriate. But in this case, you know, given some of the neighborhood concern and staff's concern, we went ahead and and reduced the scale of the project. But that's a long-winded way of saying it just made more sense. Once we knew that we were going to have a gap on Fifth Avenue to just pull the whole building off Fifth Avenue.
That leads into what my next question was. The last time we saw this project was, I believe, October 5th, 2023, where we looked at the EIR scoping for the historic resources. And at that meeting, there were some public comments that expressed concern about the preservation of the historic resources. On the commission level, I went back and looked at my notes and I watched the meeting. We asked about exploration of alternatives, but I don't think as a commission, we, we said demolition historic resource is a non-starter. So I was curious what motivated the decision to eliminate the historic resource, particularly given the discussion at the two previous meetings where it was mentioned that the building is in some state of disrepair and that there was not currently funding to repair that building. I'm, I'm trying to understand how all of these factors line together and if the historic resource is preserved. Are there any plans to bring it back into good working condition?
We were concerned about going through the environmental review process as it related to the historic process. And, and how we would navigate that at a city and staff level? And what the timing of that might look like and what, and how, how tall of a mountain that might get? Is that clear enough?
That's very clear.
Okay.
But the second half of my question, I don't know if you know if there is a plan in place for repairing that building.
So I don't know off the top of my head. I know that Wes at the JACC, I've, I have a very good relationship with. I've known him a long time. There are some resources that we are providing to the JACC. They are not handcuffed on how to deal with those resources. But I would assume that, you know, their goal and plan is to be a going concern for a long time. And so I would assume that those resources are going to be used in, in order to either improve their current environment or to potentially relocate to a better environment for their use. That was always something that they were weighing when we were talking about relocating them. Is that they have long-term plans that those particular buildings may not solve for? And so are they going to stay there and renovate? Are they going to relocate? I'm not sure. I don't think the JACC, and I'm speaking for them now, so I might get in trouble. But I don't think that, I, I think their priority is to remain a going concern and have buildings that meet their needs. I don't think their priority is necessarily to stay within the current historic resource, no matter what. But they would have to speak to that. And I'm sure, you know, Wes is working on that. But there are resources that the JACC will receive that are significant, that could, that could help them renovate the existing facility and or relocate.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Those are all of my questions. Do we have any additional questions from my fellow commissioners?
Through the chair. So Elaine had brought up the general plan update 2040, which will designate the property, the subject property to a mixed-use high of 100 to 130 units per acre. And as the, the timing of this application was about two or three weeks prior to the general plan's effective, 2040 effective date, I'm curious what your thought process was around that, Mike, if, if any at all. Had that been a concern of yours or any reason why you would not have gone for the 2040 GPU?
Yeah, I, I, this came up in the neighborhood meeting as well. And I think what is clear is that if the 2040 general plan update is approved by voters, that would allow this project to be 100% housing because of the changes that all of you have spent years, you know, working on from a zoning standpoint. As you know, as a developer, we have to weigh risk. And we don't, we don't know how that is going to play out. I also think that if this were a 100% housing project, the ability for us to provide subterranean parking would be impossible. So that has an impact on some, you know, community concerns in this particular location. I don't think that's downtown-wide, but in this particular location. And so we looked at that and felt that it made more sense to maximize the housing now, use state density bonus law. You know, be well ahead of whatever ends up happening in November. And then projects that follow will be able to have a different decision tree. But for us, providing the subterranean parking in this location, which essentially the commercial pays for economically, made sense. And then we felt that we were getting, you know, close to the 50% threshold of housing to office, you know, and so we felt that that was a good, a good place to be. And a, and a good opportunity to take now versus waiting for some of the unknowns.
Thank you.
Any more questions from my fellow commissioners? No. Can I request that we have a 10-minute break before we move forward into discussion? Thank you. Great, thank you.
This is through the chair. This is the first discussion topic regarding the building design.
Great. And were there anything, is there anything you wanted us to consider about the proposed uses as well? Or is this the focus for the discussion tonight?
Through the chairs, as planning commission have limited responsibility to address that, but it's opportunity if the planning commission want to provide any comments.
Okay, thank you. Which one of my commissioners would like to start? Commissioner Williams?
I could start, although I have like a whole, I guess I haven't kept it specifically to these discussion items. I guess I'll just make my comments, a few other comments, basically. So thank you for the presentation and for the revised project. I really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And I do want to say there's many good comments from the public. So I'm just going to preface this with just saying that generally, I think that the changes are going in the right direction. Yes, the building is taller, but the footprint is smaller. And I think it's more sensitive to the wider neighborhood area, which is single, obviously, you know, lots of it is single-family or single-story or low-rise neighborhood buildings in terms of the adjacent residential areas. I mean, although it's a larger building, I do feel that it's now skewed towards Fourth Avenue and it steps away from Fifth Avenue. And I think that's, I think that's been a good change. I'm pleased about that and that the project has also, also that the project has addressed the historical building. So again, I'm kind of deviating from the discussion item on screen here. But I'm glad that the historic building will remain in place. And I actually, I also almost missed the one, the other historic building that's being demolished is the one that I think I spoke about in one of the previous meetings about this project and that it is like the oldest building in the city of San Mateo, I think I read. So I'm sorry to see that one being demolished. And maybe there's something creative that could be done if somebody wanted to move it to another location. I do understand that it's not very feasible to leave that building in the, in the project. But I'm glad that the JACC buildings are being retained. And I also think that in terms of the, I mean, they're not, the question doesn't, I guess we talked about the overall massing here. But so in terms of the massing and the adjacencies to the preschool and the, and the JACC historic resource building, because they're not residential uses, I think that they're acceptable. I mean, it certainly wouldn't be palatable if they were next to, this tall building was next to a residential use because it doesn't step back as would be required. It is a bit imposing next to the JACC building. But I also, again, I understand that the, it's difficult to fit in the parking, the ramps, the number of parking spaces that are desired. And, you know, given that one of the comments, things that we always are discussing is the parking impact on the adjacent neighborhoods. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to do something that would reduce the parking spaces and further impact the adjacent neighborhood. So, and lastly, I guess, kind of along the same lines, I do think that the preschool will be, you know, certainly will be affected by the construction, by the, by the construction process. And I absolutely think that mitigation should be considered to mitigate the effects of the long construction process. I'm not too concerned about the privacy because as the applicant noted, Kiku Crossing also has visual access to the preschool. But I would think that the sides of those balconies that are right there could be solid rather than glass. And they would still be, you know, the front of the balconies would still be open and, you know, view out across the street. So I would like to suggest that, that the sides of those balconies that look over to the preschool could be solid or mostly solid rather than just glass or rather than open as they are now. Again, I'm kind of deviating from this, but I'm glad that there's a lot of two-bedroom units as I think we did talk about at one of the last times we saw this project. I like the arrangement of the units. Something I'm always like looking at is, you know, what are the windows for a unit? Are you just looking into some, you know, strange corner or something? But they seem to be really nicely arranged and all have good, you know, at the interior portion of the building, have good access to views out and not just to like a wall. I think that when looking at the floor plans, the one thing I particularly liked was that in a couple of the hallways, there's a view out. And you, I almost never see that on these projects that come before us. And I always want to ask for that, but you know, it's always about adding, getting as many units as we can in. So I appreciate that, you know, you're going down a corridor and there's perhaps, you know, a view out. I don't know if the, we don't need to pull the floor plan up necessarily, but I'm just commenting on something that I think was successful. It's not at every corridor, but it's like two out of three or something. However, one thing that I thought was a little strange is that the, one of the hallways opens up onto like a common shared balcony. And then the units that share that balcony, you know, they all have their studio units. So you're basically, the bedrooms are like, you know, they have a door out onto that shared balcony. I mean, it was going to be one of my questions, but it's a little unusual. I don't know how well received that will be. But architecturally, it provides good light and views from, you know, the corridor and the units and all of that. It's something I guess you'd get used to if you lived there. That was kind of interesting. In terms of the, let's see. I guess I just also wanted to make one last comment or one other comment that I think I saw in the neighborhood meeting, questions and responses that, you know, there'd been questions about the retail. And I agree with the response from the applicant that, you know, there's already a struggle for filling spaces in new buildings and old buildings in downtown. And if there was a way to, you know, if, if it's, if it's office space instead of retail space, I don't, I don't see that that makes a difference so long as we're not. I feel like that's a strain, you know, on the, the downtown area already has some retail spaces that need to be filled. I do wonder though, or I guess one of my questions about that was that if you have an office space in the, on the first floor level, you know, how do we require that active pedestrian zone that is part of a retail, you know, first floor retail requirement? And so I would like to suggest that we can have a requirement that if there's an office space there instead of retail space, that we are still requiring, you know, that the requirements that would, that would be there for retail such as, you know, openness and, you know, glass instead of walls and view in. I forget how that's all worded, but that's, I think that's really important to try to maintain that similar active pedestrian zone that's required for retail spaces. So those are my comments about that. So I, okay, the comments I had about design kind of will answer some of these things. I really like the scale of the stone bases. I think that the taller stone bases worked well with the taller building. space, I don't, I don't see that that makes a difference so long as we're not, I feel like that's a strain, you know, on the, the downtown area already has some retail spaces that need to be filled. I do wonder though, or I guess, one of my questions about that was that if you have an office space in the, on the first floor level, you know, how do we require that active pedestrian zone that is part of a retail, you know, first-floor retail requirement? And so, I would like to suggest that we can have a requirement that if there's an office space there instead of retail space, that we are still requiring, you know, that, the requirements that would, that would be there for retail, such as, you know, openness and, you know, glass instead of walls, and view in, I forget how that's all worded, but that's, I think that's really important to try to maintain that similar active pedestrian zone that's required for retail spaces. So, those are my comments about that. So, I, okay, the comments I had about design kind of will answer some of these things. I really like the scale of the stone bases. I think that the taller stone bases worked well with the taller building. I, I really, I think that some of the items that really worked well are the recessed, you know, deeper recessed openings, the stepped-back massing, the articulation. So, I was pleased with that. I think that works nicely and has that sort of Mediterranean, Spanish feel. I think a few elements could be added. You said, consider removing or adding. Yeah, I think if anything we would want, we, we could add something to, you know, right now, it looks a little bit Mediterranean on the top and less so on the bottom. I really like the white stucco and the tile roof, and I'm not sure why it's not all the way, you know, all the way down, why there's this difference, differentiation in the colors. To me, that would look really great. We've seen that on a couple of other buildings recently, and I would like to see that. The tile roof is a little bit harder to pull down, but if there was an opportunity to, to show some of that tile roof at a lower level, that, you know, that pedestrians or people passing by in cars or bikes or on foot, you know, could, could take advantage of that, that would be nice. I'm not sure where that would be, but the tile roof is a little bit lost way up there. I think it's nice to have way up there, because there will be places that it's visible from, but we want to add, add it at a lower level too, in my mind. The other piece is that I think the windows, besides the fact that they could be arched, and that would, I'm not saying, I'm not a big fan of a whole row of arched windows. So, I think that at some key, at some key locations, you know, it could differentiate sort of the entryway, the most important part of this, you know, of a facade, of any of the facades. I think that there could be some use of arched openings that would be, add to the Mediterranean architectural style. The extra-tall windows seem a little too tall to me, and they just, they're really, I'm not sure, there was another, I think it was the, like the main, there was one of the elevations that just really showcased how tall they were, and I'm not sure if they should be broken up, and, you know, I guess I'd like to consider breaking them up, breaking them down a little bit, making them into separate elements. Let's see, I think that was really, what else, overall massing or landscaping? I think I talked about item number two, kind of in my earlier, in my first comments, that I think the massing is generally working, but, and maybe what I should do is pull up the elevation that I was, well, I would have to, I'd have to go back and look at which ones, but the, that first floor window height, it just strikes me as in someplace, you know, it's broken up here in this, that we're looking at on screen, so it's not so noticeable, but there's other sections where it just seemed really tall. I think those are generally my comments for this, at this point. Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you, that's the one. So, on the top-left photo, you'll see that, you know, as you go around the right-hand corner there, that, that window is really tall, like sort of unnecessarily tall. It's not particularly highlighting anything that's, that's, that's that. So, I would like to see that looked at a little bit closer, and maybe, maybe that's, that's an arched opening, if that's, you know, the important corner. Those are my comments.
Who would like to go next, Commissioner Nugent?
Sure, I'll go next. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. I'm glad you went first, because there's a lot of just nods, like yes, yes, yes. So, I'm in agreement with pretty much everything that I heard from you. I'm going to start with, actually, the last question, just to be over, go with more high level, and it's the, are there any other design changes or revisions that should be considered to improve the project's architectural design, its overall form and function, and how it fits into and relates to the larger downtown? It's a longer version of what I just read is in the, in the agenda report. And I do think that the, you know, I personally, overall, I think it would be much better if this was a 100% residential project, or a smaller mix of office that we've seen in similar projects recently. And I think that that would be more beneficial to our downtown and probably better received. However, you know, this is the project that we're talking about today, and so I'm going to give you my, my comments on the design, so that whatever gets built is going to be the most beautiful thing that is possible there, and we can be proud of the design. So, I'm going to jump back to number one, and I'll go back to number three after I talk about, should the applicant consider removing or adding any design treatments to improve the Mediterranean architectural style? And I did find myself nodding to a lot of what Commissioner Williams was saying. And one of the things, you know, just generally, the, the bottom levels look less Mediterranean than the top levels. I also want to say I agree with the scale of the stone bases, that's, they look great, and I like the placement of them. And I had thought about the same thing about the tile roof element. I wish it was also expressed lower, too. And I actually have a thought that I want to recommend. So, it's at the step-back on the third floor, where the building transitions from commercial to, to residential. I would recommend, instead of having this, the cornice that you do, using a tile, you know, a tile faux roof edge there at the parapet wall. And an example of this that would be of the scale I'm talking about is, is on the step-back at the Kelso Depot, which is K-E-L-S-O depot, which you could Google. It's also called the Mojave National Preserve Visitor Center. It's a, it's an older building done in the Spanish Mediterranean style, but there's a really good, it's a good example of a step-back that uses the tile elements at that, at that step-back to kind of bring in the tile roof above. The Burlingame Caltrain Station also has an iteration of this as well, but I feel that the building's smaller statue allows that building to have a slightly more simple treatment than I think would be appropriate in here. I think the Kelso depot is, is a good show of my, of what I'm looking at in terms of the scale, and I think that that would be a good way to tie in and really more accentuate that step-back, and it may even make the building feel a little less big in scale, because there's a lot of that same scale of cornice around different heights, and I think that that transition should be more prominent in terms of that step-back area. And it also would help make the, the lower levels a little bit more Mediterranean feeling. Likewise, I think without, you know, making huge changes, I think the windows could be changed to be a little bit more classic Mediterranean, just by dividing them in a more traditional way, by more symmetrical lights. So, similar to what would be shown in the renderings for 1300 El Camino Real in Belmont, which is the Firehouse Square Affordable Housing Project that is either under construction or finished, it's finished. The renderings are probably the best thing to see, because the glazing bar or the muntens should not be behind glass, they shouldn't need to provide texture, but I would recommend dividing the windows in, with square lights or vertically oriented rectangles, and even carrying that down to the, the lower levels. And this also, this, the lower-level division of the, of the windows, it would provide a much more finer scale of detail, just by changing the windows to that. And this can also be visible in the renderings at Firehouse Square on the first level, but also, I want to recommend looking at the Festival Building and Fort Mason, and the San Francisco Art Institute at Fort Mason, for some examples of large windows in a Mediterranean style that are divided a little bit more finely through the use of, of mullions and muntens. I think that that treatment alone would make, would take this building to be, get a lot more people on board with it, stylistically. It's going to get, it's going to tie it maybe a little less, have a little less modern feel to it, but still be able to achieve the light that you want inside. Likewise, I would recommend that the window awnings, the shade structures at the lower level, instead of using the metallic extrusions, I would recommend, I would recommend sloped awnings, even traditional fabric awnings, which are a Mediterranean feature at those. They wouldn't have to be, but you could do, you could do aluminum or another metal and still get a, a slope that would be similar to what a fabric awning would be, if you prefer that material. But I think that that would also tie in a little bit more of a Mediterranean feel to it. And then, let's see, the window, okay, and then I'm going to go move on to number two. What modifications to the overall massing or landscaping should be made to improve the project's transition to the adjacent one or two, to two-story buildings? I, I want to say that first, I appreciate the setback that you provided at Delaware, because it provides a larger sidewalk and more room for trees, which, which is a really important thing along Delaware, so make sure that there's a good tree canopy and a more pleasing place to walk, and I think I applaud you for that. My other comment in this category is more of a design treatment issue, and it relates, again, to what I said earlier about the, the Kelso Depot, or the, you know, having that tile edge. I do think that just that feeling of the breaking up the building at that step-back is going to do enough to improve that transition visually. And then, go back to number three, are there other design changes or revisions? I want to agree with Commissioner Williams about the floor plan allowing good light into the, into the units. I do appreciate that, and I think you did a good job. The top-floor windows with the office space at the very top floor are substantially larger than the windows on the floors directly below, and that actually looks odd from, this is, this building is kind of a hybrid between modern and traditional architecture, but traditional architecture would either keep the windows consistent in size, or actually shrink them as they get taller, and the fact that they're bigger does feel a little off. And some way to break those windows up to either make them more distinct from the windows below, or also, I find that the Juliet balconies or the French balconies help hide that as well. So, treatments like that can kind of mask that, but when I look at the windows at the top floor compared to the residential windows, they feel, they feel a little off, because they're so much bigger at the top floor. The next, yeah, that, those were my, those were my comments on this, but, yeah.
I have a question for you. So, when you look at this elevation on screen, would you consider just doing the tile accent that you're talking about at this lower piece, or do you think it should, are you suggesting it wrap at the higher?
At the higher piece, yeah.
Transition between the third and the fourth floor?
Yeah, I think it, I actually think the lower piece could be fine with the, the cornice that's shown, but the tile, I mean, if you, if they did it everywhere, I think that could work too. I mean, I really want to see a mock-up.
One or the other, I guess. I just wonder if that's a lot of tile. I wonder if the lower portion between the second and third floor would be enough.
Yeah.
Because I don't know how, I can't quite tell how many of those there are. I have to go back and study that a little bit.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. But yeah, I really like the detailing that's done at the, at the roof, and I just wish, you know, it's just going to be missed if it's not shown below as well. And so, just drawing that in there, like it's, to me, that step-back is the opportunity for it.
Yeah, I agree. But I do think that the rooftop will be noticed from some, you know, throughout the city, from, you know, other buildings, or just as you approach it from far, farther away. I, I worked for a while, I feel like I might have mentioned this before, like I, it just reminds me of a building that I saw from an office building in the city, where it was at Delancey Street, and it had all these great tiled roofs that we sort of looked down on, and so, wouldn't, I think it's valuable where it is, but some more would be good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mender? Thank you. Thank you too for your great comments. I always like listening to your architectural discussions. I overall, well, applicant consider removing or adding any design treatments to improve the Mediterranean style. I would like to see more balconies. I love the fourth-floor balconies, they're so inclusive, and then you only get a, to use, or get them in certain places on five and six, and if there could be more balconies, I think it would be beneficial to the residents. I do like arched windows, and I don't think you have to have arched windows throughout, but if you had one or two, it might look nice, give it a nice feeling. The extra-tall window that Margaret had mentioned, I think if you look at A 0.03 on the, the South Claremont side where the parking, parking entrance is, the, it carries all the same lines that come from South Claremont and Fourth, and then South Claremont and Fourth, I think it works really well, because it's a long frontage, but you're using the same components on the South Claremont side, on the, the residential and parking garage, and it just looks like there's too much going on at that end. You've got the bump out, then you drop back, and then you drop back again, and it's real busy. It's nice looking, but I think it's too busy. I think you might find some way to simplify it. I'm not sure which door that you would go into, and so on and so forth. Also, as Margaret had mentioned, I do like the stone on the base, and I like the height. Usually, you don't get it that tall, and I think it's a prominent feature that works Adam's suggestion of, of that cap, I think it's a great idea, would really, really accentuate that, that differential there, make it look like a tiled, a tiled roof would be nice. That's it for the architectural component. I don't know what other, what other lines were on the discussion, Elaine? If we can go back to that? Overall massing or landscaping, you know, I think there was another building on Third- I think there was another building on Third that Whitney Hill may have built where two or three of the existing restaurants stayed, and you did a good job. I really like the way that that works, and I really think it's important to be able to respectfully incorporate existing structures. I think it gives, I think it adds to the building. In this case, I struggle a little bit, especially with the structure that is really degraded. Are we sacrificing homes to keep a building that may not actually be in this position in the next 10 years? Is that being somewhat short sighted? Is it worth the battle to try and move it or remove it? I absolutely respect historical buildings, yet I think that sometimes we may be losing opportunities for the future for a sentiment of the past that might not be worth it at this time. What I would like to, I think the massing's good, and I'm really happy there are not residential buildings that are underneath it. Then it would be pretty difficult to accept. What I would like to see is if there's some way to financially reduce some of the parking in the office space and increase the residential count from 72 to 78. Yes, we do have, this proposal does show more two-bedroom units, but the studios are pretty heavy, and they went up from 41, I think, to 48, which was a pretty good jump. Yes, the two bedrooms are, there's 15, but I'd still like to see that number 78 hit somehow, if it's feasible, if you could carve a little bit of the seventh floor out as a corner or one side of residential, I don't know. But I'd feel a little bit better if we could max it out because the job to housing imbalance is still going to be exasperated by this building to a certain extent. And I think to alleviate as much of that problem that we can would be beneficial for the city of San Mateo. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Abner. Some great comments from my fellow commissioner. I'm not even going to try to give architectural feedback half as good as Commissioner Nugent. I'm just going to defer to him. So I'm going to start my comments more broad and then get more specific. And I have to say, you broke my heart a little bit when you gave your explanation for how things might be different if we were beyond the ballot measure and not at this point in time. Because if I may paraphrase your comments back at you, it sounded like part of the calculus for your decision was the uncertainties and the risks and the desire from the local neighborhood for more parking, which building more parking requires commercial use to offset the cost. And so here we are where a desire for parking is driving a commercial use when we also hear from our residents about, are we building too much commercial? You know, we have so much vacant commercial on the peninsula right now. Do we need more commercial in our downtown? Wouldn't it be great if this was fully residential? Every poll that the city has done in the last five years, our residents strongly desire more residential. And so to me, it feels a shame that the desire for parking is feeling like what is leading the decision to provide office and not a fully residential building, especially when kitty corner to this block is the Fifth Avenue Parking Garage, which has 526 public spaces. That doesn't include the 196 spaces for the residents. I walk by that garage about 10 times a week on average. I always duck inside. Usually, there's four to six cars in there. The most I have ever counted is 11, 11 cars parked out of 526 spaces. And so to me, when I think about proposed uses, which I know we have a limited ability to comment on, it just feels a shame that the parking is what's driving the commercial use when there is such a need for residential. And you know me, I do the math. Almost 99,000 square feet of office is about 660 jobs compared to 72 units. It's a jobs to housing ratio of nine to one. So this project, while it is very close to providing the maximum amount of housing it can provide for the size of the site under Measure Y, it is exacerbating our imbalance. And I think 100% housing project, particularly 100% housing project in a post-November world where the use could be 130 units per acre would just be much more of a benefit to the community. But as Commissioner Nugent said, we're here to provide design input on the project that is before us today. And ultimately, there are strategies and calculations here, right? The final decider is not going to be the Planning Commission, it's going to be the City Council. And thinking about what community benefits can be articulated to drive a favorable decision is something I would encourage you to do. All right, getting a little bit more specific. I echo some comments that Commissioner Abner made, which is, I mean, this is going back a little bit, but I recognize your calculus in choosing to preserve the historic resources. I would feel more confident if there was a long-term plan in place to preserve those resources, because I think it would be a shame if 10 years from now, the JACC had moved to a different building. The current building was vacant, it fell into disrepair, it was red-tagged, and here we have a third of a block that is being underutilized, and then some buildings in disrepair that are vacant. That does not feel like a great long-term outcome. And so I would love if there was more of a plan in place on how to maintain those resources. I also think it is going to be really difficult for that preschool to operate during construction. I share the same concerns that the owners share. I spend most of my professional time working in buildings adjacent to construction sites. It is very loud. I have young kids. I cannot imagine getting them to go down for a nap when there's construction happening immediately next door, and I think that's going to be really challenging. And so I have a similar concern that if ultimately that site is vacated, that you are now going to have two-thirds of a block with a very large building of a specific type, and then these auxiliary buildings where, how could, how would they be used and who would want to use them if that block was designed that way? So I again encourage long-term thinking here and thinking about what happens if the two parcels that remain are vacated in the medium to long-term future. When I think about the massing, significant jumps in height, to me, one story to seven story, feels a lot more palatable when it is across a block, when you're going from two stories in one block to seven stories on the next block, especially across a block like Delaware, which is a 70-foot street, it's a pretty big gap. When you're talking about that kind of height difference on two adjacent parcels, I understand why people are concerned about that. And I agree, just looking at the renders, it looks weird. I don't know, I don't know what to do to fix that, but it does result in an aesthetic that is a little bit odd. That isn't to say that it's never done. I think the Painted Ladies are a great example in San Francisco, where you have these beautiful historic buildings that have a seven-story apartment building right next door. It's not the end of the world, but again, I kind of feel like the aesthetics would be better if the entire block was being redeveloped at a uniform height. And I just have to say, when I look at the renders from Fifth Avenue, it looks goofy, like it just looks really goofy having the one-story Safari Kids jump up to this larger building in that view corridor where you can kind of see part of Kiku Crossing, but you can't see the whole thing. When I looked at the old renders compared to the new renders, I think the old renders are just much more aesthetically pleasing, and that is what it is. I agree with some of the public comments and my fellow commissioners that the architectural style does not feel Mediterranean or Spanish-inspired. Honestly, I'm just being very direct, it looks like you took Block 21 and you put a Mediterranean-ish apartment building on top. Like the bottom, bottom three stories are very similar in aesthetic to Block 21. I like Block 21. But I think you've ended up with something that feels like kind of a mashup of what is happening over at Block 21 and what's happening at Veracata, and then like a Mediterranean apartment building. I think you've got to go all the way one way or all the way the other. Either go completely in the direction of the existing buildings that you've done, or you know, really make a pivot and try to make this feel Mediterranean in aesthetic. Commissioner Nugent had some really great suggestions. Again, I'm not going to try to compete with that. But I'll give you one more reference building, which is the project on Ninth and Claremont, which recently was approved by the Planning Commission. The address is 477 Ninth Avenue. That is a Spanish revival-style building that both looks very modern, but also looks Spanish, and I think has a mix of arched feature windows, but primarily rectangular windows, also has Juliet balconies. So I think you might be able to take some inspiration from that building. You can get the project plans and renders on the city website if you just search for the address, 477 Ninth Avenue. Even more specific comments, I think the lack of windows facing Fifth Avenue looks odd. There is something imposing about having three stories, a facade with no windows. I totally understand the privacy concerns, but I also, it makes it feel like an institution and not an active vibrant building. So I don't know if, maybe put some glazing there, but frost it? I don't know if you could, actually, 477 Ninth Avenue did this with the railroad side. They kind of put the insets where the windows would have been, but then did art pieces in them, just I think something to make that Fifth Avenue side feel a little bit more human or dynamic and less like, you know, just a solid three-story wall with no windows. And then you mentioned for the facade facing the JACC building, that an art piece could overlook that building, which may tie into the history of the site. And I was going to ask or suggest, there's a public art in Luffy. It would be great, I think, to do an art piece with the public art program. There's a lot of local artists that I think would appreciate being allowed to bid to do an art piece there. Okay, I think those are all of my design comments. Do we have any additional comments?
Sorry to keep doing this, but when I look at the elevation on, what sheet is this? A 3.02, and it's east Fifth Avenue, south elevation, there are a series of windows there, and the one that's looks solid, what am I misreading? The one that is solid, I think, is Safari Kids. I might, I have to look at the note to see what it says, but I just want to see, and then there was the one.
That's the one right there, the top left that I was discussing, where you've, the facade facing Fifth Avenue, it looks like up to four stories has no windows.
It's, the third story has windows according to this plan.
It might just be the angle next to the JACC.
Yeah, there's no windows at the first or second, and then there's windows at the third story. And then there's full-height windows. I don't know, it seems like a little, anyway. And then, and then there was the art piece, which you're kind of seeing on the top left right next to the JACC house, which would be the recess for the house. So I don't know. I, I think there are some windows on that side, but. And the only reason I pointed out is because there's, but I see it showing up there too. Never mind. Okay.
Yeah, I think maybe the word I was looking for is industrial. It's something about like the height until you get to windows just feels, feels like the use is a non-human use. Any more comments, Commissioner Williams?
Well, okay, no, never mind. I'm just getting into the weeds about that.
All right, I think those are all of our comments. So we can go ahead. Oh, one more.
All right. Sorry, I just wanted to interject. So in terms of the third floor transition at that, where the cornice is currently shown, I just want to note that, my point is that it wouldn't have to all be tile. You could break it up, like there's often homes that have like part parapet, part tile, just as like along there, just to get that tile in there, just giving you a sense of what I'm thinking. But I just want to get that tile roof down there in a substantial enough way to bring it, bring it down from the top.
I'll add one more comment too, which is every, every other commissioner mentioned that they liked the stonework on the ground floor. To me, that reads super-traditional and not at all Mediterranean, but I think you have more of an architectural education than I do. So I just want to confirm that you think that could work with a Mediterranean style.
Yeah, I think so. I think especially in like a running bond, supposed to.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it depends on, yeah, the type of stone and.
Yeah, I think it's travertine.
But yeah, I think you're, I see your point, like it doesn't necessarily look Mediterranean.
Yeah, I would be okay with brick as well, if it was more of a rustic brick.
Commissioner Abner, any more, any final comments? No, okay.
Thanks.
Okay, I think we can close out this agenda item. And that takes us to reports and announcements. Are there any reports and announcements from the staff or attorney?
Yes, good evening, through the chair. A couple of things, so looking ahead at our calendar for the coming month, we are looking at canceling the first meeting in July, which would have been on the ninth. And then we are looking at the second meeting, which would be July 23rd. We do have two items on there, one primary, which is the public hearing for the project where Donut Delight is located over at First and B. And so we just want to confirm attendance there, and then also looking ahead into our meetings in August. Please let staff know if anyone is unable to join those meetings. We do have a fifth commissioner that was recently seated by council at their last meeting, and we do anticipate this individual will be joining us for that next meeting in July. So that is all from staff.
Great. Do we have any reports and announcements from commissioners? Nope? Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.